Good evening. Welcome to the June 17th, 2025 Griffin Spalding County School Board of Education Meeting. The time is 6:01 PM. I ask that you place all electronic communication devices on silent or vibrate. This time we'll begin our roll call District One present. District Two? District Three? District Four? District Five? All right, we have a quorum. Now we'll do our prayer and pledge. Our pledge will be led by Ms. Register and our prayer will be led by Mr. Holmes.
Father God, we come right now in no other way that we know how. We come with head bowed, humbleness in our heart and love on our mind. We ask Father God that you watch over us as we execute the business of the constituents of Spalding County. And we ask Father God that you lead, guide and direct us to make the decision that will be best for all concerned. These are the things that we ask and we have confidence that you will abide. In your son Jesus's name we do pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, everybody. Now Griffin Spalding County School System announcements will be led by Mr. Zachary Holmes of District Three.
All right. First on the, on the slate, we have in observance of Juneteenth, Griffin Spalding County Schools will be closed on Thursday, June the 19th. Make sure I don't show up over here for nothing. Griffin Spalding County School District will also be closed in observation of Independence Day, July 1 through July the 4th. And also Tuesday, July the 15th, we will have our Board of Education meeting and it will begin at six o'clock right here where we are standing, sitting right now. Also, new hire orientation is July the 16th, 17th and 18th at Griffin High School. And we will have a back to school celebration Wednesday, July 24th at Oak Hill Baptist Church. Mr. Chair, that concludes all of the announcement for this meeting.
Thank you so much, Mr. Holmes. Now we have the adoption of the agenda. Before we adopt the agenda, allow us to, under action items, item three, Park at Rosenwall Site, if that will be after executive session, move that to after executive session. All right, there's no other corrections. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the adoption of this agenda?
Mr. Chair, before we do, I would like to respectfully ask that we remove under presentation and discussion, item number four, interim superintendent 100-day action plan.
Okay, what is your reason?
Mr. Chair, I've, I, in the past and not only here but everywhere else, I think this is inappropriate because this should be something that the superintendent that we, that we name, this should be a job responsibility that they present their 100-day action plan. We shouldn't be doing this prior to our superintendent selection. If you remember, this is, that's the way that we did it with our last superintendent, the incoming superintendent presented a 100-day action plan, not the interim superintendent.
Okay, well, interim superintendent, would you like to speak to the 100-day plan that you're providing for the board and then we'll add some more discussion?
Good evening. I just laid out a plan in five different areas. Those areas where the action plan relate to establishing relationships, increasing effectiveness, student success, community engagement and culture and climate. It outlines initiatives and actions that I will be doing in the interim on this action plan. Our last superintendent, when he started, he presented an entry plan. This is an action plan that the chair and I discussed and at the behest of the chair, I developed to present this evening.
And this is plan has also been shared with other board. Are there any other board members that are in favor or are not in favor of this item being removed?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
I don't have an issue with Dr. Warren presenting his action plan. I think it's very different than an entry plan. He gave each of us a copy at GSBA and made sure that Ms. Weldon received one because she was unable to go. It's an action plan. It's not an entry plan. Thank you.
Ms. Register, you're recognized.
I also, I concur. I don't have an issue. I think it's important for us to know what the actions are going to, what his vision is during the interim period while we're looking for a superintendent.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make one last little comment. I'm very aware of an action plan versus an entrance plan. I've been a part of both. And in my experience, not only on the school board, but also professionally, it is, in my opinion, inappropriate for anything other than what we are actually doing at this present time, that what has been in place, I think is adequate until we name a superintendent. We should not disrupt that flow. As an interim, respectfully, Dr. Warren, the vision should still be what we've already been operating under. And I think it's very inappropriate to do an action plan versus an entrance plan or any kind of plan. It's the duty of the interim to hold the ship steady until we appoint a superintendent. So that'll be my last comment on it. We'll just put it to a vote.
Okay, thank you. And so for the sake of, I mean, I will second that for the sake of discussion, which we've had discussion. And so I guess if everybody's agree, it's, it will stay on the agenda? All right, so we'll call for a vote for the item of the interim superintendent 100-day action plan to stay on the agenda. All right. To remove it, okay. So the motion would be to remove, it's been properly moved by Mr. Holmes and I'll second it for the sake of discussion. At this time, we'll call for the vote. When your district is called, please vote District One, no. So we're voting to either keep, to remove it off of the agenda. We're voting to remove it off of the agenda. District One, no. District Two?
No.
District Three?
Yay.
District Four?
No.
District Five?
No.
The item will stay on the agenda. All right, so now we'll do the adoption of the agenda. We ask for Park at Rosenwall Site to be removed to after executive session. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to this particular item on the agenda?
Motion to accept that request.
All right, it's been properly motioned. Is there a second? All right, second by Ms. Weldon. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. All right, five zero. Thank you. All right, next moving on to recognitions, Ms. Sue McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. One recognition tonight, the Georgia Association of School Personnel Administrators, Mr. Pugh. Thank you, sir.
All right, it's my pleasure. We get to recognize some of our own Griffin Spalding County School System staff members. The Griffin Spalding County Schools Human Resources Department earned awards from the Georgia Association of School Personnel Administrators, GASP, during the spring conference held in late May. They received a Best in Class Gold Award in Employee Handbooks. The Employee Handbook's category assesses the resources used by school districts across the state to disseminate information to employees relative to district expectations, resources and operational procedures. They also received a Best in Class Silver Award in Technology Advancements. This category recognized effective leveraging of technology throughout the school district for efficient human capital management. Congratulations to our Griffin Spalding County Schools HR Department. HR team, if you'll make your way to the step and repeat and miss battle, I'll hand you these awards and we'll take a photo.
Again, congratulations to our, congratulations to our HR department. Being led by Ms. Judy Battle. All right, next up, we will have public comments. We do have a constituent signed up. Board policy, BCBI, guidelines for public comments. Any individual desiring to speak, request it to give his or her name, address and the group, if any, that he or she is presenting. The speaker is expected to address the board, not the audience. The presentation should be as brief as possible, yet you should include all information considered by, imported by the speaker. Unless the extension of time is granted, each speaker shall not exceed three minutes. Questions, suggestions, proposals or criticisms that have been presented verbally should also be submitted when practical in writing and should be signed by the individual or the spokesperson or the group appearing before the board. Persons appearing before the board are reminded as a point of information that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Board members will not give any remarks or provide any comments from speakers. The board chair, presiding officer, refer speakers to the superintendent and district staff as necessary for further resolution. No profane or vulgar language or personal abuse against any person will be permitted. This time signed up for public comments, we have Mr. Mike Kendall. Yes, sir, Mr. M. Michael Kendall.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Interim Superintendent, Dr. Warren. My name is Michael Kendall and I appreciate the opportunity to come speak before the board. First of all, since I only have three minutes, I will be talking very fast. First of all, I'd like to say that I am very concerned about the procedure on firing the past superintendent. I think it is extremely unusual to pay somebody, from what I calculate, and of course you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my calculation, it looks like we're paying Dr. Simmons over $350,000 to leave. Now, he came in 2021, he had a 21 contract in January. This board renewed his contract eight, 17 months later. In October 22, contract run through 2025. And then in 2024 October, the board decided we're going to give him a 15% raise, bump up his salary to $201,000. And then six months later, after 2024, the board decides that we need to pay him $350,000 to leave. I think the board owes the public some explanation. This procedure is extremely rare. I've been doing this for 44 years here politically and I've never, county commission, city commission, school board, been involved in all of them for 44 years. I've never seen anybody pay a public official that kind of money to leave. If you thought he was good enough in October of '24 to renew his contract for three years and then six months later, eight months later, you decide that he needs to go with no explanation. You had a termination clause in there, but you decided not to use it. We're just going to pay him all this money to leave. I think the public deserves an explanation as to why this boy did this. I also got a question. Why in the world, from my reading of this, why would we be paying anybody a travel allowance, I mean, a car allowance that does not work for the board? Now, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but the memorandum of understanding says that Dr. Simmons is going to be paid all of his benefits and one of those benefits was a car allowance. So why in the world are we paying him a car allowance at $1,000 a month or whatever and he's not here? What could he possibly be doing on behalf of the Griffin Spalding County School System to be deserving a car allowance? And maybe I'm reading it wrong and maybe somebody can correct me, but I read it and that's what it says. I just want to say, you need to explain to us why it was necessary to pay him $350,000. I know you're not going to do it tonight, but I will be looking for, Mr. Brown, as a chairperson, I'll be looking for an explanation, a public explanation as to why that move was necessary. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kendall, for addressing the board. All right, we don't have any guests to leave. All right, now we're on to our consent agenda, consent agenda items. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the consent agenda for this meeting?
Motion to approve?
It's been properly motioned by Ms. McDonald to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Register. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. All right, five zero, consent agenda is approved. All right, next up, action items. FY26, Department of Sexual Students Memo, Contracted Services, Mr. Charles Kelly.
Good evening, interim superintendent, Dr. Warren, Chairman Brown, board. The department is requesting to enter into a contracted services agreement with service providers and hard to secure and/or specialized service positions, which are funded either through special education, local, general funds or IDA federal funds to support or provide direct services for students with disabilities. So a little bit of background information on this request, the vast majority of this is a renewal from last year except for $100,000. And so the reason why this total amount would either go up or go down within one year to the next year would be either we are adding an additional contracted position or taking a contracted position away. And we do that because we would have a direct hire to replace the contracted person. So when we have contracted positions like this, we keep the vacancy, the allotment open. So if we have somebody that's interested in a direct hire, we hire that person and then we take that contract away for that particular position. So for this position or the difference between the years, we lost one direct hire SLP and then we've added in a contracted personnel. All right, so it is recommended that the district enters into contracted service agreements with the service providers and the hard to secure and/or specialized service positions to support or provide direct services for students with disabilities. The total amount of contracted services will not exceed $2 million and will be paid through IDA and general funds.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Any questions? Here, none. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to this FY26, Department of Sexual Students Memo, Contracted Service? All right, it's been properly motioned. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Register. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Five zero. Next up, loan maintenance for FY2026, Mr. Bruce "The Build'em" Ballard.
Good afternoon, Chairman Brown, board members and interim superintendent, Dr. Warren. Appreciate the opportunity to come to you tonight to discuss a proposal we have here that we wanted to get your approval on. We had put out the bids, duly posted on the Georgia Procurement Registry and the website for loan maintenance, RFP. And with that, we did receive bids from 12 different companies. So we felt that that was good. We had some very good pricing that came in. They were definitely more competitive than in the past couple of times that we have bid. From those prices for the different schools, I put together three options to be considered and which I think are based on from what we've gone through and with my department, we feel are the best options. With that, those options range from $195,860 to $208,948 for the base cost for the agreement. We do have extra costs built in for additional cuts when the weather is raining more and more of the growing season, but this is the basic. With that, this does come in considerably lower than what we currently have and it also provides us with what we believe is a good quality of, should be a good quality of work and keep things consistent with the standards that we have or a little better. So with that, we would like to recommend that the school board approve a not to exceed price of $208,948 for the base loan maintenance services for FY2026 in order to finalize the best of the three options following final review and approval by the companies.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Ballard. Ladies and gentlemen, we've heard the presentation. Is there any, are there any questions at this moment?
I do have one question.
Yes, Ms. Register, you're recognized.
You said that this came in lower than what we typically pay?
Yes, ma'am. And again, so roughly speaking, when I say lower for the base pricing, the last time we bid, the base price was around, I think, $185,000. That's been like four years ago. So you know, it's not a considerable difference with the price of things and increasing, but because of, like I say, the extra cuts and stuff, we budget for more than what we have there for the base amount. And we feel that we would be well within our range of what we have budgeted going forward.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to this particular agenda item?
Approve?
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and second it. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Five zero. Thank you so much, Mr. Ballard. All right, next up, unarmed security bid, Chief Donald Britt.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, board members, Dr. Simmons. I'm here to discuss unarmed security guards, security officers for our elementary schools. We're seeking to hire 11 security officers for all our elementary schools in our district. Currently, we have SROs who are hired by the police department and the sheriff's office and our middle schools and high schools. In our elementary schools, we don't have anyone being security in those schools. The RFQ was posted. We had 16 responses on the bids. Below you see that the vendors, the top three vendors, the scores and the cost synergy had the highest score from the committee. And here is what they would do, uniform officer. The price includes a supervisor from some of those that put in a bid. It didn't include a supervisor that would take care of their time when they're out sick, filling in, all of that. They have a supervisor that will take care of that. Synergies in Troop County, Drew Charter School in Atlanta, they just got a contract with Bernard University in Gainesville. They will be trained before they start, first aid CPR and stop the bleed. It's recommended board education approve the contract with Central Campus Security to provide unarmed security services at all 11 elementary schools for 25 to 26 school year. The possibility of renewal for two additional years, the cost, $437,187, which will be funded of the school's safety grant.
Well, I just want to say that it is good when we are able to provide that additional resources to our scholars in our district. We know that our middle school and high schools, all secondary schools are taken care of under our, either the City of Griffin Police Department or our Spalding County Sheriff's Office. So to receive this grant, safety grant, I think it is amazing thing that our elementary schools will be covered and our, you know, will bring a more safer community. So I'm excited and so I would like to make a motion to approve. Yes, go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good evening, Mr. Britt.
Good evening.
I was just curious as to, it says it would be funded through the school's safety grant. So we can pay the $437,000 with the grant this school year. Will we for sure get the grant the next two years is my question?
According to the governor's office, we will. We've gone this year, '24, '25 and '25, '26. So we should be in good shape.
Okay. And then will we also be in concert with the sheriff's office and Griffin Police Department with regard to, for example, if something happens at Oars, will we still be in concert with our local authorities with regard to safety and safety management?
Yes, we'll all work together. They have, remember, they're security. They are unarmed, so they're not law enforcement. So when it comes, if there needs to be an arrest or any investigation, they still go through GPD or the sheriff's office. So the security officers basically there to, when we did our wish list, the principals asked for a person, another set of eyes in their building for safety. So the main thing is to check the doors, help with the parking lots.
Sure.
Exterior, just be in the building. So they have prop doors open sometimes, help the kids in and out, make sure they're not hanging out in the restroom, that type of thing.
And correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that we kind of shared And correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that we kind of shared the costs with the county, Spalding County Sheriff's Office?
Yes.
With regard to officers?
Yes, the county.
So, how much money will we save with regard to not needing all of the number of officers that we've used in the past?
I'm not sure the number, but it's quite a bit. We, it's seventy, we pay seventy percent, the district does, for the officers.
Seventy percent?
Seventy, thirty, split.
Okay, yes.
So, it's quite a bit. And they don't, they don't have enough officers to cover
Right.
The elementary schools.
Or even that.
It'll cost quite a bit more because they're, they're already mandated with those salaries and they're having weapons that'll cost quite a bit more.
And will we hire these individuals? Will HR help us hire these individuals? Will you do this, or?
The company hires.
The company, okay.
They hire and train.
Okay, very good.
Furthermore, the SROs are only assigned to our secondary schools, our middle schools and high schools. They're not in elementary.
Right, okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
I'm sorry, I was making sure Dr. Warren understood the rules in the meeting. Go ahead, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. Britt, if you remember when you first came on board?
Yes.
I had mentioned that we need to be looking at doing what some other school system have already done, which is have our own police department within our school system. And you said something that I was gonna address. I don't know if anyone is aware, was aware, that we are already paying seventy percent of personnel's salary, benefits, or whatever is included. Have you thought, is it something that, that you've been asked to do, to do a comparison of us bringing on everyone up under our umbrella because we have not received what we paid for from the, from the sheriff's department? We are, we have had schools uncovered all year and we're still paying them. And with this security company, they're not in business to not make a profit. So, we know that they have a profit margin built in there. So, looking at that and, and looking at the costs, have you looked or been asked to put together some numbers to, because we have to start somewhere in, in public safety. I've seen it done. You start somewhere and you build. Have you been asked, have you looked at that?
I haven't, but I can look into it.
Mr. Chair, interim superintendent Dr. Warren, I would suggest for the best bang for our bucks and being accountable for finances that we spend, that we begin to look at it because it was brought up when Chief Britt first came on.
It was.
On board, but we haven't done anything. And I think it's something that we need to work toward, if we can put that on your radar.
That is a great question, a great start. I know when Chief Britt first got hired, that was one of the things that I asked about Griffin Spalding having its own police department. So, Chief, it looks like Dr. Warren will get with you and you guys can formulate a plan and bring it to the board. Yes, go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Holmes, what do you mean by schools not covered? I mean, can you give us?
They, they didn't have, didn't have officers.
I think what, what happened, Ms. McDonald, is sometimes during the year, people leave, get other jobs, and it's hard to get SROs. So, sometimes they have to share them. I think Carver Road was without one from November through May and had the sheriff's on one. So, that was sometimes kind of tough. But I know, we don't pay when somebody's out or somebody leaves. It does lessen our, our cost. We pay quarterly. But yeah, they were out for several months without a SRO.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a couple of questions. First, I will, I agree with Mr. Holmes that I think it's important that we look into our own police department here. There's a cost savings, I think, of course, to be had as well as ensuring the safety, security of our schools. My question is, is it typical to have unarmed security?
That's true, I remember.
At these schools? And then, if that's the case, I know we have the strategic system, but what is the typical response time should something happen at these schools with these unarmed guards?
Response time is, is very short because it's county and city have officers in all the zones, zones or sectors or what, if you want to call them that, as far as response time goes. What's the first part of that question?
I guess, is it typical to have unarmed?
It is. In most counties, they have, sometime, some counties have, districts have an SRO armed, like an officer, with a security officer with them, in some, some districts, when they have their own agency. Unarmed is benefit elementary because of the cost. The cost will be quite high if they're armed. And also a liability issue because the law enforcement officers are mandated. They've been trained for now in the state of Georgia, six months, instead of three months to carry a weapon and the training. These security officers don't have that much training. So, that's why they, they don't have a weapon.
Okay. So, would you foresee if we had our own police department here, would we have post-certified officers? Would that be something you would envision?
If you're gonna do it, that's.
Do it the correct, do it the right way, yeah, okay.
Go big or go home, Ms. Register.
Agreed, one hundred percent, okay.
Go ahead, Ms. McDonald.
Britt, recently, I met a gentleman that works at Griffin High School unarmed. I believe he is a, an officer. And I, I was shocked. I didn't even know we had people that did that. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but this gentleman, out of the goodness of his heart, I don't think is making a whole lot of money. And you alluded to that just a minute ago. Were you aware of, that's the wrong question. How many of, I guess I'm trying to ask, how many individuals do we have in the same capacity that the gentleman I met recently at a, at a school?
You may be talking about, you're talking about security monitor at the front door? That's probably what you're talking about. Because Griffin High has two SROs, one is back there and Spalding County has one. They want to add addition to what we have. They can't legally mandate officers do the evolve at the open gates. So, we hired Mr. Hand at Griffin High and Pastor Mo at Spalding High.
Okay.
And they just do that. Because someone has to, someone has to monitor the weapons detection system.
Gotcha, okay.
So, that's what they're doing.
Yeah, for some reason, he never mentioned that to me. And I, that would have made perfect sense.
Yeah, that's why.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you so much. All right, are we all good with every, all the questions for Chief? Great job, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, what is the pleasure of this body as it relates to unarmed security bid? I would like to make a motion. Is there a second? Second by Ms. McDonald. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Five zero, thanks. Next up, FY twenty-five amended budget, Mr. Byron Moneybag Yo Jones. You got time today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The district recommends approval of the FY twenty-five amended budget for the following funds, which are listed in the summary, summary document I'll show you in just a second. General fund, special revenue fund, and school nutrition fund. So, we also have debt services fund and capital projects fund, but we don't have a need to amend those. Every June, I come to you, Board members, and before I got here in twenty-twenty, it's been tradition that in the June period, we bring in amended budget. We can do that different. We can bring it throughout the year. We may look at that in the future. But really, from your approval level, you need to be no more than five percent over in functional categories. So, we're, we're showing you the general fund here. If you're focused kind of over on the right, we have some additional receipts that we get in throughout the year that might have been unbudgeted. We get grants that we receive throughout the year. One of them is a security grant, which was Chief Britt was talking about, was approximately nine hundred thousand dollars that we got this year. We'll get that again next year. So, we show some of those supplemental expenditures here in June, and then we adjust throughout our functional levels throughout the year. So, that's general fund here and the first one. Second one is special revenue. These are our, not our local grants as much it is. Our federal grants, Title I, Title II, et cetera, when we get carryover throughout the year. We'll get that anywhere from October to March. So, we'll have to adjust, adjust those grants accordingly. And then, we always talk about the nutrition fund in our, our normal meeting that I'll show you here when I come back up. We have an amendment for him as well. We're still showing him as a deficit overall, but you'll know that he's performing way above that, but we still are presenting it as a deficit budget. He still has a fund balance of about three million dollars approximately. So, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, it is recommended that the Griffin Spalding Board of Education approve the FY twenty-five amended budget for the funds that I just explained in the attached document.
We've heard the presentation that Moneybag Yo has given us. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to the fiscal year twenty-five amended budget? Been properly moved by Ms. McDonald the fifth. Is there a second?
A.
Second by Ms. Weldon though, the fourth. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. All right, five zero. Thank you so much. All right, next up, presentations and discussions, Superintendent Search, Dr. Sam King.
I'd like to take this opportunity this evening to bring information to the board in reference to the Georgia School Boards Association Superintendent Search process. The intent is to provide information in a transparent way so that as the board decides its next steps, that you can make an informed decision in terms of where you're heading. To advance, first thing that I would bring to the attention of the board is that as you hear me preach to the choir, this is the most important work that the board does, amongst other things, in terms of entering to the process to secure your chief executive officer to lead and guide your mission and your vision in reference to Griffin Spalding. And the items that we're gonna talk about are going to be items that are linked to state board rule and linked to required expectations and training that the board has to exhibit and display as it moves forward. And I'll get to that in a moment. But in terms of the work that Georgia School Boards Association does in reference to the Superintendent Search Services, you'll see on the screen some of the partnerships that are coming to play with this process. We have a team of individuals that are trained and also receive a required professional development to lead and facilitate the Superintendent Search process for you, to support your work, not to dictate to you, but to facilitate that process in a way that you desire, but to also ensure that all the guardrails are in place in keeping with the legal aspects aligned with the Superintendent Search process from our legal counsel, as well as working in partnership and in tandem with your legal counsel as well. So, the partnership for us consists of Georgia School Boards Association being active members of NAS, the National Affiliation of Superintendent Search Services. We are members. We're also members of AASA, the National School Superintendent's Organization, and for five years reasons. You hear us talk continuously at Georgia School Boards Association about board governance and the governance team. Well, that really reflects and is consists, it consists of the board and the superintendent working together to achieve that mission, vision, et cetera. And with that in mind, one would expect that the search process should also model that same thing. Thus, we hold those partnerships at the national level with the National Superintendent's Organization, as well as being members of NAS, the National Affiliated Superintendent Searches. I mentioned earlier about what's required in state board rule. I'll get to that. This process led by Georgia School Boards Association is backed by research-based features. A few of you are familiar with part of that framework. It has been modified over time with the research because, you know, research changes, research does change over time as well. Know that our process does carry whole board credit. As you go through these steps and complete the process successfully, you will, you will receive whole board training credit as well. The goal is for you, of course, to secure that person that's going to lead and guide your system in a way that you deem important. Because from your strategic plan, you realize that the mission, the vision, the values, the goals, the beliefs, all of those things are things that the board champions. The board champions those things with the expectation that you're going to have a CEO that's going to put the steps in place to implement your policies in a way that is going to allow you to meet your mission and vision. And so, that research-based process that I mentioned will create a profile led by you that is designed to invite and attract candidates that fit your profile. So, what does that look like? The first item that I mentioned earlier in terms of moving forward, remember that into your domains, you have eight domains that are required in state board rule. Domain six is personnel. This language that you see on the screen is not a language that was created by Georgia School Boards Association, but it is language taken from state board rule and the law in terms of what you must know and be able to do as you decide to move forward into the search. Whether you decide to use GSBA as your facilitating body or to use some other supporting entity, these things are important. So, domain six is personnel. You see that standard A in state board rule says that the Board of Education has to employ the chief executive officer who acts in that capacity. And also, the element one centers on those things that you need to be looking at. One says that it needs to be a process that results in a leader with the desired knowledge, expertise, skills, prior performance history, and all of those predictors in terms of being able to meet your strategic plan. Again, going back to your mission, your vision, all those things that I mentioned earlier. These are the items that are taken from state board rule in reference to what you need to consider as you decide how to move forward. What you see on the screen here is that partnership and membership for Georgia School Boards Association. This is different than in the past. This is an evolved process and updated in terms of, of our training and what we do. We are members of NAS. And you see here on the left side is the mission of NAS coupled with the mission of Georgia School Boards Association. What you see on the left side from NAS, the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searches, you see those four bullets that are very important in terms of the work that we must do to support you going forward around the ethics that, that should be linked to the process, the integrity, the leadership, the teamwork. All those things are important with our team coming forward to support you. On the right side, you see that the School Boards Association's mission is centering on making sure we champion support for excellence in governance of Georgia's public school systems. So, we know that each system is different. That's why that customization should be there. The vacancy, the process, and the transition are some things that I want to kind of get clear here as we move forward. Since I introduced NAS, I wanted to see, wanted you to have a snapshot of what we appear to be across the national level. NAS has thirty-nine approximately states in terms of associations that are members and active, served over twenty-six years, one hundred plus searches. I'm gonna give you a folder here shortly that gives you our historical breakdown too, in terms of the searches that we've done over the past years, size of the district, FTEs, all of those things that come into play. One item that should be significant to you is that by being in partnership with NAS, we are automatically connected with one hundred plus other search consultants across the nation, which means that by posting with us, you have direct access with those highly-qualified individuals within the state of Georgia, as well as those highly-qualified individuals outside of Georgia linked to this search process. So, important. Here, you see a snapshot of those in, in the dark shaded states that are, that are full-fledged members and others that are working indirectly with us as well in terms of how we move forward. So, I want to get to the, to the process itself now. So, I mentioned the research-based framework. Many of you are already familiar with PSL standards, professional standards for educational leaders. From the research, there are ten items that are clear in the research across the nation that should move the needle for those who step forward to lead public school divisions in a complex manner. Those ten items are on the screen. Our research-based process is aligned with these things. That means that when you receive, if you decide to go with us, each of you individually will receive, will receive a research-based communication piece that will come to you. You will answer questions linked to each one of these standards in terms of what you feel Griffin Spalding needs in reference to these ten items. Also, you have an opportunity. Also, you have an opportunity to determine which of these are priority to you. Others may be, some might be more important than others. Some of those items the board might decide that is extremely important, some of those might not be so important to you. However, when you go through and you do your analysis, you submit those results back to us virtually. We complete the analysis and send it back to your board chair who will share that with you. That then becomes the analysis that creates your profile and in terms of what the preferred and the required attributes are for the next Griffin Spalding Chief Executive Officer. So these ten items will be the things that will link and guide that. Once you receive that analysis, the board can come together, modify any of that, tweak any of that, then we begin the process of beginning to build your announcement and your vacancy to move forward. So the details for the transition and the timeline, I know I've received some information in terms of where you would like to go potentially, and I have a rough draft that links to that that I'm going to provide to you in just a moment so that you can see kind of a guide of what that could look like and give you an opportunity to tweak any of those items as well. So I want to talk about the vacancy process in terms of what that means going forward as well. In terms of that, in addition to the national advertising, which you should be familiar with all of these entities that are part of our process, some things added to it from previous, but when we press go on the announcement at the, from the national standpoint because of our partnerships, these indicators are those that are going to be important for recipients to have access to your posting. And so this is a national piece amongst others. Obviously, state and internal will be important. So you see some of the things that are important within the state from Teach Georgia to GSSA to Gaspa to, of course, us, GSBA, one hundred eighty other districts and board chairs across the state of Georgia, colleges and universities, and all previous individuals that are in the database that Georgia School Boards Association has, along with the databases that I've mentioned to you, with forty-plus other states across the nation as well, in addition to others that will receive it. Okay. Building that announcement and the vacancy. I want to pause here for just a moment so to try to ensure that this is pretty clear. I alluded to this earlier. We'll work with you to establish a customized timeline based on where you would like to go and the amount of time. There are some things that, of course, we will recommend to you and you can modify. There are others that are items that are in the law with which we can't tamper, of course, for example, the announcement of the finalists and the fourteen-day waiting period and all of those things. Otherwise, though, the speed at which you move, once you receive the research-based item that I mentioned to you, will help you move forward most expeditiously. If that is a slow process, then it could impede your progress in terms of being ready to post. I mentioned all the things that will be done to get a draft announcement and a profile for you of your next superintendent, but at the same time, our communications department will be working with your school district and a designee that you identify to collect relevant pertinent information like what is your mission, what's your vision, what are those beliefs and values, size of your student population, number of FTEs, number of certified classified staff, you get the picture. All of those things that paint a good picture about your district and give great information that's important for candidates. Also, what is it that you value and what are those preferred and required attributes? Because that's what's going to allow us to be able to attract and entice the individual that is a great fit for you. So that's the intent here. Once that's done, we post. I mentioned some recommendations. One is that we typically, for a district your size, which is a little less than ten thousand, we recommend you post for six weeks. Sometimes boards decide to do it a shorter period of time. If you do, we certainly don't suggest that you go less than four weeks. So once you post, we recommend you post for six weeks. There are some decisions you can make there. Again, you have wiggle room in terms of moving that forward. That can help you get to the point of closing quicker than some other items, but at the same time, you want to make sure you're attracting and giving enough time for candidates to complete the application process. Once the information is received, we post it X number of weeks, we'll receive that information typically. We also offer the optional opportunity for stakeholder input and feedback. That's a virtual anonymous feature that's offered as part of the package, is not extra. I know that in the rough draft, I think that's something that's going to be important to you. You can decide when it's posted. That's up to the board. We recommend that you utilize it once the job is posted, the announcement is posted, post the input at the same time so that if you're posting the vacancy for five weeks, six weeks, you can receive input for that same period of time. You decide to do it shorter, that's fine. We will report that information back to you as well and it will be categorized based on the number of respondents, also categorized by stakeholders, employees, business leaders, students, faith-based clergy, et cetera. Know that this is going to be reflective of how these respondents identify themselves. So could be a degree of error in that in terms of how they choose to identify. However, it gives you good information in reference to what your community, your internal audience as well as your external audience. Your internal audience, we consider your employees, et cetera, the certified, classified. External audience will be all those other stakeholders that I mentioned to you earlier. We recommend that you use that information to inform your decisions as you prepare to enter the interview process. So that helps to inform your decision-making in terms of what type of questions are you going to ask in the first round. We will work with you to be ready to do that. We'll provide a bank of questions linked to each of those ten standards that I mentioned earlier. Your first round is typically tightly linked to those ten indicators, so you'll be asking questions linked to those ten indicators based on what you feel is important unless you modify the indicators, obviously. You'll have that bank of questions that you can modify, customize for yourselves. You can also modify those questions to align with the input and the feedback that came from the community. Those things will be important as well. So once we reach close, let's say X number of weeks, the position is closed. By rule of thumb, we expect about two weeks period of time for our HR department to do its evaluation and assessment of those packets. Multiple documents will be in place for each candidate. Those are assessed, evaluated based on what it is that you say you're looking for, and then those are grouped, as many of you are familiar with, grouped in terms of category one, two, three, and four based on how the candidates completed the application process. We hold no candidates back. If thirty candidates submit successfully, you receive all thirty of those candidates. You will see them all. However, you will know who's in group one, two, three, four. You can interview any of those. However, we will inform and update the board in reference to why a candidate possibly could be in three or four, for example. Sometimes that's a licensure issue. Sometimes it's an experience issue. For example, if you said you want a candidate that has ascended over time from the classroom to the principalship to the central level to superintendency and a candidate submits but does not have that, obviously, if that's what you have deemed important in your profile, that could result in the candidate being in a lower category. Now, does that preclude you from interviewing the candidate? No. But you will know what those areas of interest or concern might be. Going to speed it up here so that I could give you these folders and I know you're going to have some questions shortly. And this particular bullet, bulleted slide is a repeat of things that I've mentioned to you, but it gives you another, more of a bird's eye view of how that HR process is done. It does consist of all of the necessary reference checks that one would expect as well as the social media checks, all those things that come into place because that's a moving target. It changes every day. It also will consist of an agreement and an affirmation page that indicates that the candidates realize that they could be subjected to the criminal background check in a timely manner as well as these other checks that are here. So that's covered for you. The extensive reference check, social media checks, we go deeper than just the references that the candidate provides. We also go deeper in terms of other individuals that might have come in contact with the candidates as well. Reference calls, background checking, confirmation, interview scripts, community engagement facilitation, I mentioned those things to you. I mentioned that the anonymous virtual input, community survey piece is a part of the package. If at some point you decide that you want to do something in-person in a community-focused group or something of that nature, that will be additional. Many boards decide they don't want to go that route. Some boards have decided they would like to. If you do, that's an additional part of the package, but we can facilitate that for you as well. Alright, obviously, the board has work to do to do this. We carry the ball in the items that I just mentioned, but once we complete that two weeks after the closing process, then we're going to meet with you. I believe that you have probably an expectation in terms of when you want that meeting to occur. Once that happens, we will meet with you in executive session. Tonight is a public meeting, obviously. When we get to the point past the announcement, when it's time to get into one and two, where we're going to come to present candidates to you, that must be an executive session for personnel. You will receive those candidates in executive session, you will know who they are, you and your legal counsel throughout, et cetera. So we get you prepared for that. We offer training and support for interviewing, all the legal pieces that go along with that. We keep your legal counsel abreast along the way and copying with information and, of course, addressing questions along the way as well. Next step, when you're ready to select your candidates for interview, it will be based on that review that you would do in executive session, linked to what it is that you say you want. Step four, you'll schedule those interviews. You schedule those based on notifying us of when you want to do this. We will put together your schedule for you based on those individuals that you want to interview, contact them, report back to you, ensure that all the site preparation and et cetera are taking place and based on your designees as well. Second round interviews are usually necessary. We facilitate and support that as well. You see that in step six. Step seven is where you see an example of what's in Georgia law that I mentioned earlier in terms of the ticking clock. Once you're ready to announce finalists, the law says that you can announce as many as three, meaning up to three, three, two, or one. You can announce a sole finalist, two or three. However, once that's done, that's going to be the first public meeting that you have outside of executive session. That's when you're going to meet publicly and announce your finalists to the public. Once that happens, we will provide you a legally redacted packet that gives extensive information on that candidate, the media, the public, all stakeholders. Then we'll be given access to all that information to review all the great attributes of your candidates. So a fourteen-day waiting period after the announcement is made, you can meet on the fifteenth day, not before, on the fifteenth day or beyond to announce the permanent choice. Typically during that fourteen-day waiting period is when you get into conversation about contract terms, no contract to sign, but terms and all of those things and whatever else you needed to do with that. Going to move now to something that you all touched on a little bit early. Following that, part of that process too is the transition for your selection in terms of their ninety-day entry status and update. That should be aligned with the priorities that the board will have pinpointed. Research, the reason for this is that research is pretty keen on the first one hundred days, the first three months, et cetera, in terms of a person taking the position following an outgoing superintendent. And it centers really on the first three, on those first three months because of the board superintendent relation, understanding, and alignment piece. Those first set of thirty days, second set of thirty days, third set of thirty days, those are intended for the candidate to do his or her work, report back to the board from a formative standpoint with recommendations in terms of what they will be doing within those first one hundred days, linked to your priorities that you say are important. So we offer that facilitation for you as well. It's not required, something that you can consider. It's a part of the package as well. Customized timeline is where I'm going to pause and hand you a folder here. You have other items of importance. So on the left side of the folder, you have a document that looks like this, which states draft timeline. This has been tweaked and modified based on what you have said and can be modified more deeply in terms of what you might or might not want to do. You notice initiating the search for you as you begin to think about and ponder your next step, if you're going to partner with Georgia School Boards Association, the first step is to take action to do so. Once you do that, you notify us that you want to move forward. We will then send an agreement to your chair and CC, your legal counsel. Then it's provided to the remainder of you so that you are clear on what's involved in the process. It's a docu-sign document. You sign it. Our executive director signs. We begin to move forward. Then we will send you, once that is signed, we will immediately send you that research-based item to get started to build your profile. Notice that on this rough draft, search posted to the GSBA website and launched, I have that listed as July twenty twenty-five so that receipt of application process can begin. In order to post that, all the items that I mentioned earlier need to take place prior to that because we would need to be ready to post it around July thirteenth to be ready to close at the time that I listed. Application close will be August twenty-four. If applications close in August twenty-four, that would give GSBA in the review process two weeks to do that and be ready. The plan would be to be ready to meet with you in September, September ninth in executive session with candidates. In your folder, you have other extensive information along with a brochure and other items that go a little bit deeper than what I've done with this forty-thousand-foot view of a presentation. So I would urge you to review that if you have other questions. You all certainly know how to reach me. Questions now.
Yeah, and board members, Dr. King's information is included in this. You can reach out to him if you have any questions directly. You can reach out to him directly. Alright, so we've heard the presentation from Dr. King. Are there any questions at this time, members of the board? Three of us have already been through this process before. We have two new members. Ms. Regis, did you get a chance to meet Dr. King during the conference? Good, awesome. So Ms. Weldon, you have not had a chance to meet Dr. King, so hopefully by tonight's meeting is over, you'll get a chance to go introduce yourself to him. He has a wonderful extensive knowledge with school board governance and leading this, so we're excited to work with you. So we can say now that we're ready to move forward as a board to work with GSBA, so shoot over that document, Dr. King, when you're ready.
Absolutely. We will begin the process of putting it together for you tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Send to you.
Alright, so. And so at this time, Ms. McDonald's going to make a motion.
I make a motion. Make a motion that we move forward with Georgia School Board Association to secure a new superintendent.
Alright, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. Alright, five zero. Uh, myself. Alright, thank you so much, Dr. King.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Alright, transportation update, Mr. Patrick Martin, who will be doing this virtually. Mr. Martin, hello to you, sir. Mr. Martin, hello to you, sir.
All right, good evening, good evening, good evening. Again, good evening, hope all is well. Board Chair Brown, cabinet members, Interim Superintendent Dr. Warren. So, we are currently at our GAPT, Georgia Association of People Transportation for Leadership here in Jethro Island. So, a lot of learning thing and policy updates. Just to come in a few. Really excited about this opportunity to make contact with our colleagues and our state representatives for more information. So, tonight, I will be going over a few updates related to transportation. And as always, our non-negotiables, be professional, be accountable, communicate effectively, and that's my goal tonight for the members of the board and our communities. Our focus areas literacy, enrollment, attendance, and discipline and saw, which that is our task every day to make this as a prosperous school year for our scholars of Griffin Spalding. Our mission and vision is to have a distinctive brand for strong leaders, with great schools, and of course, our mission is to empower each student to graduate college and career-ready. Tonight's presentation will align with the bottom tier for aligning our resources, all the way over for organizational operational efficiency, and as always, to help foster student achievement. Before I begin with updates, I want to highlight that this is our transportation leadership staff. For some of our employees that's been here last year, we do have a few new updates in our safety and training led by Ms. Darra Robinson. We have a new driver supervisor, Mrs. Lindsay Hastings, and Department Secretary, Ms. Esther Hogard. Many of you have already met Ms. Kimberly Elam, our assistant director, and Ms. Charlotte Quelo, as well as Mr. Newman, our dispatcher, and Mr. Henley, our other driver supervisor. So, before I get into the specifics of the updates, I do want to highlight a few background challenges as we started into the 24-25 school year. My last year was the first year of a three-year migration process into our Traverse Riding software. We also had an increased amount of students being transported, and we had some logistical challenges which due to re-routing some of our routes that was resolved and to accommodate the increased student ridership. There was a technology issue or interface between Infinite Campus and Traverse, which is now since been resolved. So, to ensure that we have a smooth start of the school year, we took a very proactive approach. We looked as an internal and looked at see how we can review, address those challenges. I met with my department, we discussed those challenges that we had. And one thing that we've discussed during our GAPT conferences is other departments facing the same challenges with the first part of school with new students for that first year. So, we wanted to be proactive. So, in our internal route review, we looked at items such as our route time, ridership, distance of our routes, some internal training with our school-based staff as well as our internal team members, and then we met with every school bus driver to confirm their route. The goal this year is based on those route adjustments made last year, is to be continuing on those routes, but many of those families have already got accustomed and used to a school bus driver. For the most part, they'd be having the same driver this year as well as similar route to accommodate them to school. And last thing, we also revised our registration process because we have seen some, the integration process sync up better. But before I get to that, I want to highlight a few things that we've accomplished this past year, namely our on-time arrival. We sent a tick up in our elementary school tier. We stepped back in our high school and middle school. And then overall, we was happy to report out that we had a successful AM and PM with on-time arrivals of 96 and 94 respectively. We did a deep dive in that root loss analysis that I shared before. And many of those issues that we had with our high school tiers and middle school tiers was based on a few factors related to the ridership, the distance, and the increased amount of our students. Something else I want to highlight for you all this afternoon is from last year where we had 94 positions needed, we were staffed at 96 drivers. What we ran into, we have a lot of rural areas. So, this year, want to be really aggressive in recruiting more drivers to accommodate the added riders that we transport every year. We seen a tick up last year, and we're already on pace that we've seen that we've already routed some 56,000 students for the end-of-school year, and we want to plan for that. And we'll want to do a lot earlier than, you know, being faced with that first part of the year to really set everybody up for success. Our attendance was really good for our drivers that was here. So, we had a lot of success. We recognized a lot of those team members during our end-of-the-year event. So, we're really excited about the ones who are here and building to that culture of bringing amazing school bus operators and monitors onto the department. So, we want to plan to increase that amount of drivers to accommodate the added students or any other issue that we may come across such as absences or vacancies. So, I mentioned earlier, we talked about revisiting our registration process, and I mentioned that we had success with the advancement for a lot of our scholars. However, one thing that we really took a notice of is our advancing fifth graders and eighth graders because they're going to a different school. There was a three-step checklist that we reached out to the school-based staff to help usher in a smooth transition, being that when those integration was already successful for a million of students, the ones that we had a keen focus on is the fifth graders and eighth graders. So, the three-step process was to send a letter home, get the letter back from those parents and guardians, enter it in Infinite Campus, and then make those manual adjustments for our rising grade, excuse me, our rising sixth graders and rising ninth graders. To that end, this is the actual form that was sent home to our families. We asked that was, the forms was returned back in to give ample time to accommodate those requests for the next school year. This information was submitted into a Google platform to by our school clerks and secretaries. I want to take the opportunity again to help support our department to ensure, again, we have a smooth transition to our 25-26 school year. Many of our families have already gotten this card, a postcard. We want to, again, be really proactive, so a lot of notifications is already going out. This is one example of that. I already had our correspondent, many families, reaching back out and thanking, thanking the team for getting this notice earlier as opposed to waiting a lot later to the, during the school year. So, we've already sent those postcodes out. We also were sending out a push notice in my MyRide bus app. And then something we're doing new this year is our ready-to-roll event, which I'm really excited about that, and it's another way to be a proactive as opposed to waiting to open house to have students register and have confirmed information. So, I do want to take a look at the ready-to-roll. This is the day, or excuse me, days that we will, the department will be servicing our parents and families for students related to bus question. The ask is if any family receives their card and any great information is on there based on their stop or pickup. We ask those families to arrive during these ready-to-roll event days so we can help confirm and make adjustments. Additionally, if you don't get a postcard, we're asking you to join us on those days as well. It's going to be June 24th, 25th, and 26th over at GRCCA from 9 to 12th and 2 to 5 respectively. Our goal is to get all students to sign up for a route by June 26th to ensure they have full transition to school. So, those are the few updates that we have this evening from the department. With that being said, I'll be happy to take any questions as may happen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Martin. Before we go for questions, I'm going to recognize Dr. Warren to make a special announcement about Mr. Martin.
As Mr. Martin stated, he and the leadership team are currently down in Jethro Island at the yearly People Transportation State Conference. And it was on yesterday that Mr. Martin was recognized by Griffin Reissa area as the transportation wreck the other year. So, kudos to Mr. Martin.
We got to see your face, Mr. Martin. We want to see your face. Maybe Mr. Wheeler can help him how to. I said maybe Mr. Wheeler can help him how to turn on his camera. Inside joke. There you go. Congratulations, sir. Thank you for representing us very well.
Absolutely. We have an amazing team. We have a great support from Dr. Warren and leadership, and we have a great support with our school. So, thank you guys, thanks to Dr. Warren for recognition. But again, this is a team effort. We have a team goal, so we'll keep pushing forward for this school year. So, we're going to try to go back to back.
All right, thank you so much, and congratulations again, Mr. Martin. Do we have any questions? Ms. Register, you're recognized. Mr. Martin, you got a couple of questions.
Hey, Mr. Martin. So, first of all, congratulations. That's an awesome award. I will say, as a parent in the school system, we have received our postcards, so thank you so much. I also want to think it's, I think it's great for the system to have a very proactive approach. Parents' stress about transportation, that's one of the number-one stressors, is making sure they can get their child to and from school on time. So, kudos to you. I do have one request, if possible, the hours for the ready-to-roll. Can we adjust at least one of those days to make it more accessible to working parents, maybe earlier or later? Just at least one of those days because that's what I have heard from the community is that it's not conducive to a working parent's schedule.
Absolutely. We don't have any, I don't have any issue adjusting one of those days. We'll communicate that out as well. So, thank you for that feedback.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
All right, we'll go with Ms. Weldon, and then we'll go with Ms. McDonald.
The complaint that I receive most from the parents is that there's no one that answers the phone. I hear that a million times, and I think at the beginning of last year, I came down and offered to try and help. Is there some way that we could answer the phone? Because these parents panic. They start calling the principal, they call superintendent, then they call the board member, they ca, you know how it goes at the beginning of the year. And having worked in the system myself, I know that I always tell the parents, be calm, we will get your child home, we will find your child. But that's just one of the complaints that I hear often, way often. If someone would just answer the phone and say, it's going to be okay. I think that would, that would calm those parents down because, you know, we're traveling with their children. So, maybe, maybe we could work on that some way because at the beginning of the school, for the first two weeks of school, I must have received a thousand calls. And I always try to tell them, you know, the first couple of days, we've got to be calm, we got to work with it. But they, they still, you know, say, well, nobody answered that phone. I said, they're busy getting your children home. So, I just want to put that little bug in your ear.
Well, thanks for that feedback. We've already reached out with our HR team to accommodate those added phone requests by getting more staff members to help support us. We have some team members coming to help support us next week as well as our being again in the school year, more people to answer those phones. But thanks for that feedback.
All right, thank you for listening.
All right, final round, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Martin, on your award. Well-deserved, I'm sure. It's a hard job. I just was sitting here, number one, I agree with what Ms. Register said. That's the first thing that came to my mind, to be sure that we take care of working parents. That's always what we hear a lot, too. And secondly, we always hear about not, the phone's not being answered. But my question is, how will we get this information out to our parents to be at GRCCA? Text, email, via Mr. Pugh's office? How are we going to be sure we're proactive enough to let our parents know what's going
Yes, so we'll work with Mr. Pugh's office to get that information out, similar to how we reached out or to let them know that the postcards was en route. We sent our email blast, and so we'll double down on that, as communicate other ways such as the app as well as the RoboText information we can send out as well, if I'm not mistaken. But we'll work with Mr. Pugh to see the most advantageous way to communicate that out. But thank you for your feedback as well. Thanks for the compliment.
And, and one additional question is, the last line on the last page, the ready-to-roll page, it says, those who do not may not have a confirmed route assignment until August the 11th. That would put me, as a parent, in panic mode. Is that the when school starts? Is that the day school starts, or is it before that, July 31st? So, I guess my question is, why so late with regard to when school starts, July 31st?
So, our goal is to accommodate them a lot earlier. And what we faced last year is we had a lot of families that registered for a bus. Now, we'll continue to register students for buses and make the routes. But we want to try to be a little bit more proactive instead of waiting to take those information and expect the bus to be there the first day. That kind of pushes that time sequence off a little bit if we wait the open house, register for a bus, and expect it to be there. I don't want to set the expectation that, you know, we can accommodate. Yes, we will do everything we can to do so, but I would much rather for the ones that's already, you know, pre-registered and we communicate that information out. And then, the last part of it, we will be at the open house in the event that they do have some that need bus services to help accommodate that. We just want to, again, try to focus this, really push towards doing it a lot earlier. That'll give us a lot more window to accommodate a lot of alternative stops that we have, that we get requests for. So, but yeah, I mean, yeah, we have the 11th, but we're going to try our best to get those scholars transported as soon as possible.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, and again, congratulations. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board members to Mr. Martin? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Martin. Congratulations again to you, sir. All right, next up.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Next up, school safety and security presentation, Chief Donald Britt.
Good evening again, Chairman Brown, board members, Dr. Warren. Going to do an update on safety and security for the 24-25 school year. Our non-negotiables, focus areas. Our non-negotiables, uh focused areas, uh as you see. Mission and vision, distinctive brand, strong leaders, great schools, mission to empower each student to graduate college and career ready. Roadman to success, uh present safe, supportive learning environments, organization and operational efficiency here today. Safety, why safety matters. Safety of our students and staff is not just a priority, it's a foundation upon which all learners are built. Safety matters. Of course, starting out here, you see our state law for our safety plans we have for all our schools and true drills that we have to do by October first of every year. Safety walkthroughs, we do each campus with our gym representative Clint Westbrook. And all this is reported to GMA in the portal. Our fire drills are done monthly, uh of course, in October statewide fire drill where the fire department goes out to all the schools, monitors the drill. And November and February is severe weather drills. We conducted two hundred sixty-two drills for the year. Uh that's every month drills were done. But a lot of schools took the initiative. We encouraged them to do drills on their own. So a lot of them did drills several times extra. Severe weather drills, they'll call Mr. Stikes or one of us and say, totally give us a notice when they use the synergics. Uh because we didn't wanna get surprised. Think the school's been locked down, there's intruder, but they always called ahead of time. Twenty-five were noticed before they did the intruder drills. So the schools did a great a great job of practicing those drills monthly, you know, their own.
Chief, question. Uh is this the drill where they have to exit the building in a certain amount of time or?
The intruder drill.
Well, not the intruder, for the the fire drill.
The fire drill, yeah. And and the fire department is there on site to to.
They say like a certain time that they have to exit the school?
They have a couple of minutes.
You know what what that timeframe is?
About about two. I'm not sure the exact time.
Two minutes, okay.
Where they practice the whole thing. And we, like I said, we encourage not just do fire drills, we encourage also to do drills rather at different times. So a lot of times when it's, you know, you're sitting there saying, okay, time for the drill is now to clock, go. Does not usually how things happen. So we tell them, do them at different times, do them at lunchtime, when they're at P. It's to see how people gonna react. This new requirement, new law, H B two sixty-eight, it's a new law that goes in effect July first. The mobile panic alert system, the digital school mapping we already have as far as our synthetic plan. Some of the the mandated law will uh be on the student services, Dr. Moore and Dr. Ridley. Some will be on the mental health. We've already had meetings with Dr. McElroy and her team and Ms. Pruitt to discuss uh of ju- of doing better on the uh behavior threats. We have meets with law enforcement and we've had, we have, we'd had, we've had two and we have several more coming up, prepare for that. The Student Anonymous Reporting App, Mr. Stikes and I met with the company yesterday and today. Uh we get that done by July first of this year. We'll be grandfathered in because that goes to affect July first, twenty twenty-six. And if we went to then, uh we have to, we may have to have twenty-four seven, somebody monitoring that, so which will cause. But if we went into August first now, because now the state's saying they may have just an app for all school systems in August. So they will have a model for us to go by August first. Funding for our initiatives, uh school safety grant, there's East Ploss. You know, we've got gates, Bruce's team has put up gates, fencing rather, at different schools, still doing that. The Fivela, we we ordered twenty-five, twenty-five are here. We're ordering twenty-five more this fall. So we have fifty new A Ds in our schools. Weapon detection system, we no longer have Evolve. We just have Open Gate. They came and got the Evolve June last week. So all schools be going, all schools begin, well, middle school and high school will be getting Open Gates at those schools uh this fall. Keyless build entry system we have and of course, thank you again for passing Security Office Elementary Schools, much needed. Strategics, as we said, you can do fire drill, intruder drills, the synergics. Uh it's connected with law enforcement. You press it eight or more times, it'll go straight to our nine-one-one center. And they automatically send uh law enforcement personnel to that site. The Go Kits, we've already distributed to the schools before school was out. So when they come at the school, the principals and admin team will dispense those uh bags to their teachers.
Me and Mr. Holmes still waiting on our backpack.
Okay. Let's make sure all the kids have them first. We'll we'll take care of you. Uh event plan, open house, as we did this year, we'll have, coming up, we'll have obviously at every school in the district for open house to be there. Uh they work games, graduation ceremony. Went great this year. It's about third ones. Excellent planning for that. We started meeting in the March. Met every week with Dr. Warren, uh law enforcement Bruce, Adam, who was at a couple of those meetings to discuss safety and things we could do different. So it went very, very well. This year, we used our command, sent upstairs, there was a fireman and law enforcement personnel and Mrs. Stikes are up there to watch the cameras. Sue Cook, great help. We have over twenty cameras at the stadium, all over the stadium, so we can watch people. So that's a great asset to us. We also have speeds on cameras, you know, and we have school bus stop on cameras on our school buses. One other thing I wanna mention, I failed to put on there. We had what's called Clippers and Cops I wanna tell you about. Mr. Tyrone Dennis, who's a retired APD officer who lives in St. Louis and from St. Louis. He's the head of the school department out there, school safety. He has a team of officers from Atlanta. They go, it started out going in barber shops. They didn't, they they don't cut hair. It's called Clippers because of the barber shop. Just going into barber shops, having talks about safety, making good decisions, game prevention in the barber shops. So he took that and now he goes, he's into school, he goes to schools now, all over the country with his team. Uh you may have seen Michael Sada, who's WSB news reporter. He's a part of that team. So they came the week after spring break to Spalding High East School, picked forty students. So forty students at Spalding, the next day with the Griffin High School, and they went to AZK. And we hope to have him back in the fall at some point to meet with our middle school students. It's called Clippers and Cops. And that funding, we will, I wanna thank once again this awesome fellow programs for funding that for us. These are various um items we have for safety, keyless entry, the badge again that Mr. Brown wants, Mr. Holmes, the A phones, the strobes, the badges, and of course, the Open Gate. The ones you, the ones you sit at the stadium, of course, the sheriff department, Sheriff Dixon's team, about four of those. We now have some more funded through the safety grant for the middle school and high school, as I said. And the one on your right, well, the right would be AZK. Safety of all students is crucial to us. It's all our responsibilities, teachers, students, parents, school administrators and the community. Thank you.
All right. Awesome job, Chief. Are there any questions for Chief Britt? Ms. McDonald, you're recognized.
Mr. Britt, I just wanted to say thank you. You know, since I have been on this board, this is the most comprehensive, and I know the laws have changed. But I I still think we would have done it anyway. And I just wanted to thank you and your team for what you have done and how you have led and how you have secured our buildings and to take care of our students, our employees and our staffs because it's just really so important. So I just wanted to publicly thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Great job, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Holmes, you 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 got a you got a question or a comment?
Britt, she didn't say anything about raise.
All right. All right. Thank you so much, Chief. Um no further questions for you. All right, next up, interim superintendent, one hundred day action plan, Dr. Donald Warren.
Good afternoon, board members and audience.
Good evening.
I can recall several weeks ago, being in my office, working on several projects, and I got a call from board chair, Mr. Brown, asking me to consider taking on the role of being interim superintendent because I had done it before, um several years ago. Between our last two superintendents. And I thought about a quote by the famous John Wick. I have served and I will be of service. I really have a vested interest in completing year number eight in the school district. So during this interim, it's like a dash from one leader to a second one. Uh I'm humbled by your trust in me to lead the district for a second time in an interim capacity. And I wanna move forward with the district. As a large organization, we have community, we have nine thousand plus students and about fifteen hundred employees relying on our leadership uh to advance student achievement. And that's what we're here to do. So with that in mind, I prepared an action plan, not an entry plan, but an action plan to ensure that we're moving in the right direction because there's a lot of people depending on our on our leadership efforts. This document explains my actions and activities that I will engage in during this one hundred days. Uh just some around some of the highlights of this plan. Some of the essential leadership that I'm expected to provide includes utilizing data to make informed decisions, improve student achievement and communicate effectively. As you can see, our vision nor our mission has not changed, nor will they change. Our vision is to have a distinctive brand, strong leaders and great schools. Our mission remains the same, to empower each student to graduate college and career ready. Our mission articulates how we'll make our vision a reality. I wanna work with you, with our stakeholders, to answer two questions. Where are we currently in relation to achieving our vision? And secondly, what obstacles can we overcome together to reach our vision? Lastly, our school district is ready, set and going into a new day. I firmly believe that education is great equalizer. So I wanna work with you and for you to make that evident in each of our students' lives, that education, again, is great equalizer. Relationships. The business of business is relationships. The business of life is human connections. In order for the district to be effective and how functioning, which we wanna be, it's imperative that the board and the superintendent develop and maintain a collegial relationship that provides both honest communication and dialogue. Some of the actions that I will take in this regard are to meet with each board member on an individual individual basis to get to know them, to learn their thoughts, aspirations and desires desires for our school district. I will be meeting with our school board attorneys to determine any areas of immediate importance. Also, I'll develop a process and timeline to measure the progress of our strategic plan as well as our newly adopted budget for our school district. Again, those are the highlights and some of the actions for establishing relationships. Next, any how functioning organization wants to be very effective. Their goal two relates to increasing effectiveness. Take a look at organizational capacity and alignment. Some of these actions include coordinating efforts to facilitate the audit of the district office for the recently approved Board of Education resolution. Additionally, take a look at reviewing our org chart and its alignment, the student achievement and accomplishing the goals of our plan. As well as reviewing our most recent report from Cogniz- Cognia, the accreditation agency. I will also be conducting uh one-on-one meetings with senior cabinet members and direct report employees. Additionally, most importantly, meeting with school building administrative teams to solicit their feedback on how we can support each other and improve. Um last week, I launched a NICS assessment that went out to our assistant principals, principals and district office staff. Asked them two questions for each department. What is that department doing well? How can we enhance those efforts? Secondly, what are the sore toe issues? And what are your suggestions to tackle those sore toe issues to make things better? Uh it's anonymous. I wanna ensure that our support provided by central office is indeed coming across as support. I wanna ensure that we're providing the best customer service possible. That last bullet there on this page relates to developing processes for both monitoring the effectiveness um of the opening of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. For the last several you years, we have employed playbooks. There are four playbooks um during the school year. So I'm leading the effort um to close down for the closer year playbook, to close the previous year, twenty-four, twenty-five, to put a nice bow on it and tie it away and put it aside. Additionally, I'm working with our full cabinet, district office personnel, that we will push out to our school level administrators a playbook for the great opening of schools. Some of that work has already taken um has already started. As uh Mr. Martin mentioned, working with him, we revamped our entire registration process. Sorry. We revamped our entire registration process for transportation. Additionally, working with uh Mr. Britt and Mr. Stikes, we've enhanced our school safety and security measures to insert, to make certain that we're um aligned to the new requirements of recently passed legislation. So that's in the work, all to have a great opening of our twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The next area relates to student success. And I'll read to you this quote from Dr. Robert Marzano. He's a very uh famous and prolific education researcher and author. And it reads, in affected districts, the local board of education is aligned with and supportive of the non-negotiable goals of achievement and instruction. The board, and I repeat, the board, ensures that these goals remain the top priorities in the district and no other initiatives deflect attention or resources from accomplishing these goals. That's a heavy quote. It is very true. As interim superintendent, I will ensure that all organizational efforts and resources are indeed aligned to support students that are academically, socially and emotionally successful and ready for college and career. Some of these actions are to analyze patterns in student achievement data and achievement gaps in order to begin assessing the current state of teaching and learning. We realize we have several schools on various lists from the Georgia Department of Education. Additionally, I will work with stakeholders to analyze data for discipline, attendance and college freshman performance to determine areas of strength as well as areas of improvement. Additionally, I will meet with teaching and learning department personnel, and I've begun those meetings to deepen my understanding of the state of instructional delivery and student performance in Griffin Spalding. Had a great meeting last week. I will miss Weldon and some of our personnel from teaching and learning to go over some gifted instructional services items. Again, with that, I want to review our instructional delivery models for exceptional student education, English learners as well as that gifted program. And again, take a look at that Gibson report and see how we can align our practices to the recommendation in that Gibson report for special ed. Additionally, evaluating our strategies as a district to close instructional gaps and improve students' attendance and behavior. Those are some actions that we can take and look into to improve student success. Comment at it from a flashlight perspective instead of a hammer perspective. Looking to see what the issues are, highlighting those, how we can tackle and resolve those issues using a flashlight instead of a hammer. Thank you. Lastly, community engagement. That old African proverb, "It takes a village to raise a child," and it really does. Public schools require deep commitment from the entire community to be successful. And we are very, very fortunate in Griffin Spalding to have the support of various civic groups and agencies within our borders. I'll be conducting one surveys to assess the perception of students, parents, and teachers. Additionally, reviewing the results of our employee X interviews and our standard views to gain the experiences of our employees, to listen to their voice, to see how we can improve their work experiences. And lastly, reviewing mental health supports for both our students and reviewing the employer assistance program. These are some actions for culture and climate that I will engage upon. In closing, again, I'm very humbled to be asked to service interim for the second time. And I believe that by building on a strong foundation and capitalizing on our stakeholder partnerships, we can propel this district as a leader in the region, state, and nation. I look forward to both engaging to understand and working both with and for you to make our vision a reality, and to ensure that education indeed remains the great equalizer. Thank you for your time. I know I shared the draft of this with you several weeks ago. All five of you have seen it ahead of time. So what questions can I answer?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've heard the report action plan from Dr. Warren. Do we have any questions for Dr. Warren? No? All right, of course, as always, if you do have questions, you may reach out to him directly to get any of those answers questioned. Thank you so much, Dr. Warren.
Thank you.
All right, next up is our May 2025 VOE financial report, Mr. Byron Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to see you again, board members. This is 11 months through the year, through May 31st. Approximately $44 million in fund balance in the general fund, and over in nutrition, about $4.8 million at this time. General operating statement of general fund, $7 million in revenues, almost $10 million in expenses. So we've finally went and are using a little bit of our fund balance, which we had passed a budget to do that. At the end of the year, we have a lot of year-end entries, so that's to be expected. We'll have some more of that coming in June. Third page is our special revenue funds. Again, these are our grants from state and local funds. Pretty well in line. Again, if there's some negatives at the bottom, we've got to do a little bit of drawdown, but that's pretty common at this point in the year. Nutrition statement, about $8.2 million in revenue so far, $7 million in expense, still $1.1 million to the good. Again, there'll be some more equipment expenses, et cetera, that we're paying in June, so some of that may come down. On our investment funds, about $112 million approximately. Again, the majority of that is general fund investments up at the top left, and then at the bottom left, $45.7 million in bond funds. So we're still making about 4.36% on our investments for the majority of those. And then our SPOS funds, this is through 10 months of year one of SPOS 7, $1.2 million. So about $12.1 million so far. Two more months, it'll approach $15 million for the first year of SPOS 7. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you so much. Do we have any questions for Mr. Jones? Any questions for Mr. Jones as it relates to the financial report for May 2025? All right, thank you so much. All right, information items, would you receive them in your packet, board members? Construction renovation progress summary, number 304, and monthly facilities maintenance report for May 2025. This time, we're going to go to governance team comments. And we recently, we returned back from Savannah from the summer conference and delegate assembly. So at this time, for board member comments, for those who attended the conference, if you would just tell us what you learned, and just share with us what your overall update about the conference is. And we can start with Mr. Holmes over there in the third district.
Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to share, the two takeaways that was big for me at this year's conference was how they emphasized the importance of safety, and we have to do all we can. That was a quote a gentleman made. We used to be concerned about, and talked about, Mr. Wheeler will appreciate this, was, "A kid can't learn when they're hungry." And we used to emphasize how we need to make sure kids eat. But now, the big concern is a kid can't learn if they don't feel safe. And that was a big takeaway that I brought back from the conference. And the other one, the keynote speaker, he did a great job. And he was really pounding on school board members and officials, taking care of the business that is most important, and that we keep politics out of education. And that was real powerful for me, because he did a great job in his presentation. So that was my takeaway from this conference. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to be able to share.
Absolutely. All right, next we'll move to... If you hear my voice clap once, hear my... We're going to miss register.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a great time at my first GSBA conference in Savannah. I was going to echo what Mr. Holmes said about the keynote speaker being phenomenal. I think if you haven't heard him speak before, tell me again what his name was.
Sam Glenn.
Yes, Sam Glenn. He was phenomenal, and I would love for us to try to get him, for our faculty and staff to hear him. He was very engaging, had a lot of great things to say. I think one of my biggest takeaways is from the conferences, of course, learning about the support that GSBA offers to all school boards, talking to the vendors, talking about the importance of safety and security in our schools, of course, and then learning from what other districts have done, learning from their successes and maybe some of their downfalls, just to be able to see, you know, what they're doing in their districts and take it back to ours. So thank you.
And I actually attended one of the sessions with Ms. Register. And everybody knows that Ms. Register's in higher education, so to hear my voice clap once drives her insane, and to hear "shh, shh, shh," she was like, "Just be quiet, what is he doing?" But anyway, we had a great time. We'll go to our interim superintendent.
Yes, learned a lot there from the other superintendents around the state, as well as talking to several members from GSBA. Saturday morning, they had a dynamic speaker, Mr. Willie Spears, who gave a great presentation related to Boards of Education working together as one, getting on the same page and working as a team. So impressed with him, that Mr. Holmes and I both spoke to him afterwards and took photo and shook his hand. And Ms. Pew and I are working to get him to be our keynote speaker at our Back to School Celebration on July 24th, to talk to our teachers. Additionally, have lunch, spend some time with the board for an hour or so, so he can speak to the board about coming together as one, working together as a team. And that afternoon, he's going to spend some time at one of our schools to help that faculty and staff enhance their classroom management skills. So he was a dynamic speaker, brings a lot to the table, and we're excited to bring him to Griffin Spalding County Schools.
Awesome, awesome. It was a pleasure to attend the conference, as always. I love policy, and generally will attend the policy session, but this time, I went to the superintendent and school board member relations session, which was led by Donna Hinton, who's a former superintendent. But just amazing, just information that we learned, being able to collaborate in group sessions with other school board members from other counties is always an amazing, amazing time. Seeing folks from Grady County down there, always talking about Mr. Loki, and folks from Baldwin that always ask about Mrs. Battle. You know, it's always good to meet other school board members to see what they're doing, and just provide, you know, just being a think tank. So it was an amazing, amazing time to go down and enjoy. And then always, the riverboat cruise is always the thing to do. And so definitely enjoy it, and we had a great time learning on how we can strengthen these relationships. Also, if you look at the, if you could, I kind of skipped it over the agenda, but whoever's working the technology, if you will pull up the norms and protocol graphic that we had in the beginning, each board meeting, we normally would go over these. We're just taking it a step further to put it in front of you as we talk to other school districts and see what they do. They talked about the words being posted, the graphic being done. And so this is one thing that we're bringing back. And so quarter-two focus words are hard work, respect, and equity, that all students matter. And so this is something that all six of us are committed to. Hard work, respect, and making sure that all of our students matter. And so those are my comments. Ms. McDonald. Oh, and Ms. McDonald also served as our delegate. So when it came time to vote for our new leadership for Georgia School Board Association and our district, Ms. McDonald was our representative in doing that.
Right, always an honor to do that for the Griffin Spalding County Schools. Thank you, Mr. Brown. If you want to look up Sam Glenn, G-L-E-N-N, he was a motivational speaker our first morning. He's incredible. I have ordered information from him, his website. But there's one takeaway I wanted to share with you is you grow through what you go through. Let me repeat that. You grow through what you go through. I think we're in the process of doing that now, finding new leadership. I know in my personal life, I'm doing that right now, too, with some hardships I've faced lately, as we all have.
We all do.
But you have to grow through what you go through. And it just brings me cold chills, because this is a man that was an ADHD student. It was really hard for him to graduate from college. His last semester, he needed one class. It was full. He had to kind of interview professors to see if he would meet the criteria with regard to his ADHD. And there was no room left, but the professor said, "Sam, you can sit on the floor." And the guy sat on the floor, and he got the credit he needed to graduate. So he had my attention from the very beginning. He has a YouTube channel. He is hysterical. He painted the entire time we watched him. So we had a four-by-six painting on a canvas by the time his speaking was over to us. Just incredible. His back was to us the entire time, but he was funny. He was motivational. And I have ordered some of his art to put in my home, because I need to remember that, grow through what you go through. So, thank you.
He even told a funny story about going to do this professional development, and the water had gone out. And so in the facility, they were using no running water. And so they had to use the restroom at the Catholic church across the street. And so it was just a funny story how he just put it all together. But if you have not had a chance to hear Mr. Glenn, this will be a great opportunity for you to Google him, look at his YouTube, and to see the work that he does.
One other thing, Mr. Brown. I wanted to recognize Ms. Daniel, is that correct?
Yes.
Melanie?
Melanie Daniels.
I met her earlier. She is on our HR page. She is our new secondary math coordinator. And by the way, you got the job. But I wanted to recognize you as being in our audience tonight. So, welcome.
Melanie is a product of Griffin Spalding. Yes. And my church member over at Faith United Methodist Church. And so it's always good to see the connections in the community. And when you have the same goal, to do what's best for our scholars of the district. So Melanie, welcome aboard, and we're looking forward to working with you.
Mr. Brown, you're not going to tell all about Melanie?
Well, I can tell all her business now, but I'll save some for you, if you want to tell a little bit about her.
Make the connection of the family she's connected with. We all know that Daniels in the city of Griffin, she's married to a Griffin, a fellow Griffinite as well, who has done well for himself.
Dennis in the community, yes, you're right.
I think you might know a guy named Cornelius. He's a dentist up in, I guess they call it McDonald's, on Highway 20. He has a practice there. By the way, when I say Daniels, she's the daughter-in-law of retired Captain Homer Daniels.
Correct. All right, Ms. Welder, any remarks?
Will to attend, because my husband had surgery. But I did view the conference virtually. And I always enjoy the lawyer part of it, where we learn, you know, real-life things that happen in the school system. I love it when they highlight the students. And the National Anthem almost made me cry. It was awesome. That was absolutely awesome.
Liberty County, yeah, they did do a great job.
Sam Glenn was wonderful. And I mean, what else can you say? I've got one of his comments. He says, "Finding the masterpiece in the mess." And he held your attention the entire time. He painted this huge canvas of a wolf. And he said, "You got to be part of the pack." But he never, ever was at any time boring.
He wasn't.
Yeah, and I hated, I missed the boat ride and all the good food. So I hope I can attend next year. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, and also, we have Chase with us from our legal team. We don't get to see him too much, but it's good to have you, Chase. Thank you for being here with us today. All right, so we are set to have executive session, and we are going to executive session to discuss and deliberate upon the appointment of employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action dismissal, periodic evaluation, public officer, to also discuss and authorize negotiations for purchase, disposal, lease of property, and to consult as it relates to legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation. What is the pleasure of this body as it relates to going into executive session? All right, so in proper motion, going to executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second in my Ms. Register, other second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your right hand. All right, and we are in executive session.